Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. At this time, I'd like to call the Common Council Committee of the Hall meeting to order. The meeting notice was posted, the Common Council Committee of the Hall, Purpose ICE Access, when at 7:00 PM, Monday, January fourteenth, two thousand and eight, in the Common Council Chamber's third floor, City Hall, one fifty-five Deer Hill Avenue. My name is Joe Cavill, I'm the chairman of the committee, and I would like to just remind everybody that tonight's meeting is a meeting of the council of the hall. It is not a public hearing section of one of our procedures. It's meant specifically for the entire council to ask members of the city departments for questions and answers to what we have proposed before us tonight. I would ask the clerk if she would please call the roll for attendance.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Johnson, 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 Mr. President. 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 Twenty-one members present. I thank you all for your attendance tonight. What I would like to do is I'd like to ask the, probably the mayor's office, since they were the one of the first people that we requested our information from, we technically are the petitioners, the letter came from the council, to the mayor's office, to the chief of police, and to the corporation council's office for reports, and we will now hear about those reports that we received in our packet in the January Common Council meeting. Mayor Bowden, would you like to start?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Mark Bowden, mayor of the city of Danbury. Before I begin, I just want to thank the council, obviously, for being here tonight. Thank you for your service to the community. We appreciate all that you do. With us tonight are a bunch of individuals representing various agencies within the city government. I'm going to leave the chief the responsibility to introduce all of his officers, but we have basically the entire command staff here, I believe. In addition, we also have a representative from ICE, John Marley, who is of council with ICE, has joined us also for questions for those people that have them. Basically, what I thought I would do is kind of do an overview. I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Pinter, who's our deputy corporation counsel, along with Mr. Yamman, who drafted the report, related to the legal aspects of this. Then I'll turn it over to Chief Baker, let him address the public safety aspects of potential cooperating agreement with ICE, and then, obviously, your process is to have questions, dialogue, discussion, and so forth. So the question, I think we ought to start first, is how did we get here? How did we begin this discussion? And as a gentle reminder to the council, the members of this council wrote to my office, as well as the chiefs, as well as the deputy corporation counsel, and asked that we investigate, research the potential feasibility of entering into an agreement with Immigration and Customs Enforcement, and the what's commonly referred to as the ICE Access Program. That letter was put on, placed on the council agenda in October. We then spent several months, both the chief, myself, and our deputy corporation counsel, doing our research. Our reports were placed on your agenda in January. At the January meeting, they were referred to a committee of the hall for further discussion on this issue. So that's basically why we're here and how we got here. Let me just say, I also thought it would be important for us just to take a step back and look at what our current process is as it relates to immigration within the city. How do we handle situations that resolve around somebody's status who is here illegally? Our current practice is basically pretty simple, and the chief will elaborate on this, obviously, in his discussion, and be available for further questioning if folks want to sort of flesh that out. But essentially, to give you a practical application of how we handle things, if somebody, for example, should run a red light, any resident of the city, regardless of ethnicity, regardless of their status, we will take their license, run their license through the NCIC database, the COLLECT database, the FBI database, however you want to refer to that. On that database, if there is something we call a hit, in other words, there's an ICE detainer on there, our officers are instructed to hold the individual, to contact Immigration and Customs Enforcement, they will then come down and pick the individual up, and they'll enter into the proceedings related to whatever it is that the detainer's on there for. It could be that maybe they overstayed their visa, it could be that they might have ignored a deportation order, there's all kinds of things that pop up through that database. Currently, we also have an informal arrangement with ICE. Certainly, ICE is in the city a lot, typically would not be out of, over the top to say at least once a week, once every two weeks or so, executing warrants, looking for individuals, wanted individuals, things like that. They don't need our permission to do that, they don't need an agreement to do that, they do that. And they certainly will be doing that again in the future. That pretty much is the extent of what we do now in terms of immigration within the city, illegal immigration, I might say. The other thing I thought I'd mentioned before we shifted over to some of the other folks is about process. There's been some discussion about what's the process, and how did we end up here, doing it in this manner? And I think it's important to note that the process that we are recommending that you follow is consistent with past practice relating to how we handle agreements, with whether it be the federal government, whether it be purchase agreements for land, whatever that issue might be. And that process is dictated in part by our charter and by our ordinance, which I know you're all familiar with, and so that's really why we have taken the steps and are recommending the steps to be taken today. Tonight, we will continue to recommend, as we did at the January meeting, that you authorize the chief to enter into an agreement with ICE, a memo of understanding to utilize the ICE Access Program for several of our officers to receive training. I think it's also important to note that this is about training. It's not about ICE coming into Danbury, they're going to come whether we have an agreement with them or not. This is about giving our police officers, really in a very targeted way, an extra level of training, training that they don't have right now, an excuse upon training they don't have access to right now, training that is provided free of charge by the federal government. There's been some question about, well, why not just adopt, you know, why not just go and get the MOU, bring it back, and then we can vote on the MOU? The problem with that is twofold. One, there's a significant time delay in applying for this program. Right now, it's at about four or five months before officers actually go for training. We're concerned that a further delay could set us back as far as nine months. On top of that, we have obtained sample MOUs that all of you received several days ago in the mail, and Mr. Marley is here to attest that those are, that's the MOU, that's what you get. Finally, I just want to mention, and this is very important, the council, under that MOU, is authorized to opt out. The city can opt out of this agreement at any time. So if there were some questions about the practices, or there were some feelings that it just wasn't working right, council member could put an item on the agenda, we could discuss it, and decide to terminate the agreement, if that's the will of the majority of the council people here. The council can also, and, you know, upon my recommendation, or the chiefs, or any member of our command staff, they could adjust the MOU. We could make adjustments to it as the process goes on. In fact, the chief may come back to us at some points in the future and say, "Well, I think we need more training here, this training really isn't quite what we thought it would be, it's not really helping us that much." That's something that we need to do. And I think it's also important to note, this is not an open-ended agreement that lasts forever. It's not an open-ended agreement that lasts forever. So I just wanted to kind of just remind folks that this is really about training, it's about training several of our officers in a targeted way, and it's certainly not about any of the practices that ICE had. At the conclusion of the blessed remarks, excuse me, Chief Baker's remarks, I'll be available to sort of summarize, and I'm sure Mr. Cabo will throw it open to questions and discussions. Chief Baker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the council. Thank you for the opportunity to present information to the council on this subject. Just to step back a little bit into the early remarks that the mayor had, our office was asked in October by the common council to bring back information on the feasibility of entering into the ICE Access Program that the federal government by statute has authorized states and localities to enter into. There are about sixty different organizations around the country that have already worked into this program. There are five states that have worked into this program in one form or another. Your request came to this office, and keep in mind that what comes to you here today, or even a week and a half ago, that Thursday when you had your regular meeting, is not a fresh issue. There's been a period of time since October, even before, when there were inquiries made by the police chief, both written and verbal, inquiring about this program, the ICE Access Program. Obviously, as the mayor has stated, and the chief will say as well, there has been collaboration to the extent that the inherent police powers that are available allow for collaboration with respect to this type of program. However, this program is a formalization of some of those components, more formal and more carefully prescribed for Danbury and for any police department or municipality that enters into it. What happened was, the chief and others, they enter into a certain level of discussions with ICE officials and others about the program to get some preliminary information, they receive materials, they review those materials, they look at the benefits of the program, and based upon what the overall program provides, which is outlined in the memorandum of understanding that you have, the police chief then, as he did to you by correspondence, and as the mayor did, indicate to you what program they would like to see. And you have that in the written submissions that you had asked for from the mayor's office, as well as from the police chief. The preparation of the summary reports brings you the idea and the intent and the request on the part of the police chief, who, in fact, the police chief and his officers and designated trained officers are the ones who will be working with ICE to carry out the program. I did want to, I did want to hit, if you'll permit, just a couple of points that the mayor alluded to as well. The memorandum of understanding, that is the document that the ICE Access materials indicate should be entered into in order to effectuate the provisions of this program. I looked at the memorandum of understanding, and there are, out of twenty provisions or paragraphs in the memorandum of understanding, there are eighteen that are truly boilerplate provisions. These are provisions that probably won't change very much. They have to do with the level of supervision that the ICE officials themselves would be providing to the trained local police department officials, who will be in the ICE Access Program, provides, as the mayor indicated, for modification of the program. It provides for some of the benchmarks which you would see in all of these agreements. There are one or two paragraphs in there, on pages two and three of your memorandum of understanding, that specify elements of the program that the chief and the mayor have already addressed to you. These elements are all in the program, they're all duly authorized by the program, and adopting the memorandum of understanding will permit the implementation of those items as the police chief directs his staff, and as the police chief discusses with ICE officials. Those are already part and parcel of the ICE Access Program and in the memorandum of understanding. And again, remember that the preliminary discussions that the chief and others have already have, have addressed these issues, and they're clear, and they've made clear in correspondence to you what it is that they'd like to see in the memorandum of understanding. The mayor alluded to and spoke to the city code, as well as the city charter, and it's worth just a minute or two on those. Both the code of ordinances and the city charter provide that prior to the entry into a contractual arrangement, and the charter is the one that speaks specifically about agreements or arrangements with federal authorities, that the council can, if the mayor recommends, and he is, that the city enter into an agreement with ICE, in this case, to implement the provisions of this program. That's number one. Number two is, the code of ordinances also provide that prior to the ability to enter into this kind of arrangement, or any kind of contractual arrangement, the mayor has to receive authorization from you to do that. These are very conservative, quite conservative provisions, and you've used those many times in the past in order to give department personnel, including the police chief, fire chief, the mayor, and others, giving them broad-based authority, and the exception to the rule is narrowly based authority. You generally, if you have personnel who work for the city, mayor, police chief, fire chief, these individuals who are trained and skilled in their craft, you generally give them authority to proceed to enter into agreements as those two sections of our code and charter require. Secondly, the past practice and policy, and just to give you several examples, when the council approves resolutions for the acquisition of property, typically it comes to our office to negotiate for property, for easements, or for acquisition for other purposes, we ask you for that authority, and in the resolution that you're provided with, you give us that authority to go ahead, condemn either by negotiation or by eminent domain, the acquisition of property. You generally never see those again. We, with your trust, and with the trust that our office is charged with, we will go ahead, negotiate, or condemn property. We're required to provide fair value, so there's process involved there that we go through. And at the end of the day, at the end of the road, what you come out with is what you wanted, which is the acquisition or negotiation of a piece of property for the purposes that you have authorized and that we've explained to you. So this is really what's before you today as well, it's not that much different. The other, and perhaps most important component of this, is that in the Immigration and Naturalization Act itself, the attorney general of the United States, and in turn, the director of the Department of Homeland Security, is given the authority by federal law to enter into these agreements with Danbury, for example, with the states that have entered into it, with different police departments around the country, has given the attorney general the authority to negotiate and execute agreements. The attorney general in those cases, clear from the literature, does not take those agreements back to the Congress of the United States to obtain final approval of the agreements. What they do is they rely on two things. Number one is they rely on the attorney general's office and the director of Homeland Security having vetted those municipalities, police departments, or states, having vetted their needs, and then being comfortable with that, so that the Congress doesn't say, "Well, each time you execute, well, we need to make sure that it's done right." They're comfortable with that. Secondly, they've already crafted the basic parameters of all of these agreements, they know what they want. They also know that there'll be a certain amount of flexibility in the agreements which can be dealt with during the course of the process. But in order to implement this kind of program as quickly as possible, the federal government trusted the attorney general, trusted the director of Homeland Security, and in turn, again, from reading the literature and interpreting it, in turn, trusting the municipality and its police chief, who's charged with this kind of enforcement, of course, to also carry the project forward and implement the provisions of the ICE Access Program. The ICE Access Program, as I say, has been in place in many areas of the country, it's been tried and tested, we're not aware of any challenges to the program, and it carries forward, as the mayor again indicated, portions, to an extent of what the Danbury Police Department already does, except with more protections and with more understanding of what the limitations are. I can reserve comments on the law, some of the law for later if you'd like, but I'll just say very briefly that one of the questions that a few councilmen brought to me was, what's the difference between the now and then of this ICE Access Program? Right now, the powers that exist under what might be termed the inherent police authority that exists nationwide, in other words, each police department or officer needs to be available to help another one. For example, it probably dates back to the eighteen hundreds, if somebody's fleeing across state lines, and they go across the state lines, well, the police department can't stop and not pursue further, or not have some way to pursue further. So this kind of collaboration is extremely important, that's what's happening right now. Authority to arrest, detain, and transfer personnel to ICE is what the authority is now in very broad terms. Under the ICE Access Program, that's enlarged to allow for investigation, the taking of evidence, the actual arrest power, you can actually transport individuals by the local trained officers to facilities elsewhere that ICE has dictated. Finally, last thing I'll say at this point, finally, the memorandum of understanding is very clear, even as to those two provisions and paragraphs that I mentioned, which can be built in, is that the ICE always retains supervision, they want to retain supervision, there are clauses in the agreement, as well as elsewhere, that ICE wants to know what's going on, they want to be around, but once they train you, once they train you, you actually are agents, able to do the job that they would do, but they are there to supervise. So that's, you know, in snapshot form, the now and then of the legal aspects of the program. Thank you, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Chief Baker?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, and members of the common council. First of all, thank you for the opportunity to address you tonight, and let me start with a couple preliminaries. First of all, besides my written report of December twentieth, I mailed out a supplemental packet last Thursday, January tenth. And that packet included a number of items, I just want to list those items to be sure you received them and had a chance to go over them. First item was a pamphlet on the delegation of Immigration Authority, and that was done by ICE, a frequently asked questions sheet prepared by ICE, a training syllabus for the task force officer of the program we would apply for. There was a PowerPoint presentation from ICE, there was also the sample memo of understanding, and finally, there was a two-eighty-seven-G field survey that would be conducted by the resident agent in charge for this area when we enter into the program. And I want to thank you for taking the time to review that. I especially want to thank Councilman Kern and Councilman Knapp for actually calling me today and discussing that packet. I do appreciate the interest in carefully reviewing the material. The other thing I'd like to do is, I'd like to take a moment to introduce the senior staff that's accompanying me to tonight's meeting. They represent probably close to one hundred and fifty, maybe two hundred years of police experience here in Danbury. My tenure in Danbury has been relatively brief, but they've done their entire law enforcement career here in Danbury, and if you have any questions, they're here to answer your questions, and they also can provide some real-life examples of how the partnership would be beneficial with crimes that have occurred here in Danbury. And just starting at the front table here, Lieutenant, Detective Lieutenant Jim Fisher, who is in charge of our special investigative division, Detective Captain Mitch Weston, who is in charge of the entire investigative division, which includes SID, the detective bureau, and our youth aides bureau. In the front row, fireside Deputy Chief Terry Shanahan, who assists me greatly each and every day, Captain Bob Miles, who's in charge of our administrative division, Captain Tom Wendell, who's in charge of our patrol division, Captain Dan Mulvey, who's in charge of our training division, and the other guests that we have, next to Captain Mulvey in the front row, John Marley, who's a senior staff attorney from ICE. And I think his presence is especially important here tonight, because we're here to talk about training, and he's actually done some of that training, the training that we're about to, we're contemplating engaging in, so he'll be able to answer your questions there also. But back to the reason for the appearance tonight, last October, the council asked me to study the ICE Access Program, and I, along with members of our senior staff, met with ICE officials from the Boston office, also from the New Haven office. We studied their written materials, I even attended an immigration summit in Washington, DC, put on by the police executive research forum on this very issue, and discussed it with chiefs from across the country. And what I learned there is that there's no one answer, there's no right answer, and that each solution seems to be tailored to the individual communities. With that being said, with that study being done, it's my recommendation that we make application and enter into a formal partnership with ICE. First of all, that would formalize our longstanding practice, but that's also something we do not only with ICE, but we enter into partnerships with the FBI, with DEA, with the State Department, with the marshals, with state police. We have a number of both formal and informal relationships that we enter into, this is not something new to law enforcement or new to ICE. The focus of our participation, again, like I said in my written report, would be on crimes, we want to catch criminals. We focus on gangs and organized crime, we focus on drug smuggling, human trafficking, document fraud, identity and benefit theft, and worksite investigations. There are several benefits to our participation. Again, I believe the primary benefit to the city and to the Danbury Police Department is the training. And if you look at the PowerPoint that was included in your packet that I sent out last Thursday, there was about eight or nine different areas where we'll receive training, including nationality law, immigration law, criminal law, the statutory authority, document examination, which is very big here in Danbury. It's very difficult for our officers to recognize false documents from foreign countries, so this training would be very beneficial. Cultural communications, we talked about special status aliens, guidelines for, Department of Justice guidelines regarding the use of race, and the removal charges. The other big benefit, I think, to the city of Danbury entering into this agreement is the supervision. The mayor talked about that, Mr. Pinter talked about that, that when our officers are engaged in immigration activity, they'll fall under the supervision of ICE, and I think that's very important, this is a very complicated area of the law, and the people that will be supervising them will have had much more training and experience than our officers. I think another benefit to the city is that we'll have access to the ICE manpower, access to ICE equipment. We'll certainly have access to ICE databases and to Department of Homeland Security intelligence information that's shared on that database. We'll have the ability to cross jurisdictional lines in investigating crimes, we'll have the ability to participate in asset forfeiture through ICE investigations. In other words, if prostitution or drug smuggling, there's proceeds from those crimes, we can apply to seize those assets and apply them for use in the Danbury Police Department. And I think one of the best benefits, it will be better communication between the city of Danbury and ICE. I've heard of the problems in Nassau County, I sat next to Larry Mulvey, the commissioner of police for Nassau County, at the ICE, the immigration summit in Washington, DC, and I think the biggest problem they had in Nassau County was the breakdown in communications between ICE and the Nassau County Police. So I think that this will improve communications and help to avoid those problems. There are certainly some costs to the city of Danbury, we're going to have to pay the cost for our officers while they attend the training, their salaries, there's some computer and access to the database, there's some costs involved with that. So there are some costs, but I think the benefits far outweigh the costs. And in summing up my remarks, I'd like to make two points. First of all, I've tried to, or I understand that this is a very political and a very emotional issue, and I've tried to remain very clinical and strip away the politics and strip away the emotion, and I do recommend this partnership as a law enforcement professional, as being in the best interest of the Danbury Police Department, and in the best interest of the city of Danbury. The other point I'd like to make is that people have unrealistic expectations about what law enforcement can and cannot do when it comes to immigration, and I suspect, at the end of the day, neither extreme, either to the right or the left, will be satisfied with how this program works. But with that being said, I think it is in the best interest of the city, and I do recommend it as law enforcement professionals, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Chief Baker. Mayor, do you want to do a summary?
Thank you very much, and we certainly, the entire staff is here to ask questions, but obviously, it's a council meeting, so we want to move forward on you conducting your business. I do want to just say that, you know, and emphasize that, first of all, just to take a step back, you know, we are a community that celebrates its rich multicultural diversity, and that's a good thing. We're also a community that has to recognize that when there are programs or trainings that we can take advantage of, we ought to do that. And in some ways, this program, this training, will actually protect some of our residents, because our officers will be trained at a higher level to understand what they can and cannot do as it relates to immigration law. I also want to just make note of that, in two thousand and five, if you remember, I had written to the governor and asked her about this particular program, it wasn't the ICE Access Program, it was something called two-eighty-seven-G, and the state at that time declined to participate, and at that time, people had asked me, "Well, would you do it with Danbury?" And at the time, I said, "No," that I didn't think I would. And I think what's changed between two thousand and five and now, two thousand and eight, is that we've developed an informal relationship with ICE, we've seen how they work, we understand what their goals and what their mission is, and we feel a lot more comfortable in terms of what they're doing, and that was probably the biggest reason. And when I made that request, I also had written to the attorney general of the state of Connecticut, Richard Blumenthal, and he even opined that, in his letter back to me dated April the twenty-second, two thousand and five, that there are a number of advantages for a state or municipality to reach in this agreement with the federal government. He went on to say that this will allow us to access federal databases that may assist in law enforcement and national security matters. So in their own review, they felt that this program was a worthwhile program as well. I think, and I think the chief is on- I think, and I think the chief has on that we are going to, and what the chief has articulated, we're going to focus in on key areas that we know can be a problem, specifically the criminal alien program, which is an issue within Danbury. And each year, unfortunately, we catch individuals who are wanted in other countries for some pretty heinous crimes. And that certainly isn't really a reflection on the community or whatever particular ethnic community that group comes from, but these individuals have to be apprehended. The ICE Access Program will help us have the tools to apprehend those individuals. And when you talk to people in the undocumented community, they themselves don't want criminals living amongst them. They want those individuals arrested. So I think that there are certainly a number of different programs that are available, but obviously, when we look at priorities and how many officers we'd send training, we would really be focusing on the criminal aspect of behavior within the community. With that, I'm sure the entire staff remains open for questions and discussions. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen, for presenting this. Ladies and gentlemen, what I'm going to do is open up the floor for questions, and I think what I'd like to start by doing, just for the purposes of discussion, I would entertain a motion so that we can start the process rolling under discussion. Anyone interested in making a motion? Do you want to start asking questions first, and then we can move into, okay, we'll start by asking questions first. In order to try to do it in an orderly fashion, what I'll do is I'll give everybody one shot first. We'll try to get through everybody with their first series of questions, and then we can proceed into the second set of questions and follow-up that people may have. So if there is anybody that'd like to ask a question, Mr. Riley?
Thank you. Thank you very much. Through the chair to Chief Baker. Thank you very much again, Chief, for your paperwork that we received. On page three, designation of authorized functions, if you'd be so kind to take a look at that. And I will quote from what is here. "The power and authority to interrogate any person to believe to be an alien as to his right to be or remain in the United States, INA," and I'll skip that, "and to process for immigration violations those individuals who are convicted of state or federal felony offenses." My question is, I'm a little concerned about that. How can we be sure that this function that I just read would not be abused to the point where we're going to send, we're going to send many of these hardworking individuals that are, yes, truly illegal, but we're going to send them into a fear zone, maybe feeling they have to go underground because maybe we're going to abuse the, abuse the power? And how could you assure us that this type of, maybe knocking on the door, or, and all due respect to your department, I'm not demeaning your department by any means, but I just want to be assured that we would not be knocking on doors and just pulling people out and begin to interrogate them. Are you illegal, therefore, can I take you, and what happens after that?
Well, first of all, I'd like to reiterate that the focus of this program is to catch criminals, and a very narrow focus on specific crimes. We're not going to do sweeps, we're not going door-to-door, checking papers, anything like that. Number one, we don't have the resources, ICE doesn't have the resources to do that. We're going to narrowly focus on certain crimes, we're going to partner to catch criminals. That's the focus here. Number two is that there are laws in Connecticut, there are federal laws, there's the Fourth Amendment to the Constitution, they still all apply, that people have rights and they can go to court. One of the other safeguards built into the memorandum of agreement is there is a complaint process, if, that spelled out how to make a complaint through the ICE chain of command if we feel, or somebody feels that they are, we are abusing the authority. And then I think the last safeguard in place is that, what the mayor talked about, is that there is an opt-out provision. If we see abuse, if we see problems, I believe we had some discussion in our meeting about 30-day notice or 60-day notice, and we can end this agreement. But with that being said, I'd say I think it is a good idea, I think it's something we should pursue, because what we want to do is we want to catch criminals.
I'd kind of like to just work on the day, just trying to keep things in some order. Mr. Levy, were you going to raise your hand?
I'm concerned.
Please proceed.
I'm kind of new to what previously happened with this information, but not new to the council.
Spent some 10 years here prior to, and I don't think a lot in protocol has changed. I was kind of interested in the way this all came about, and maybe you can fill me in, and that is that you alluded to the fact that you were working on ICE and you were very, very much in favor of their program, and yet, it came out of the council, the request to investigate this. I was through the chair, I wonder if the chief could explain how that happened and how come it didn't come out of the department itself?
Actually, if I can, Chief Baker, it was, I could probably answer that for you. While surfing the net back in August, I had come across the 287G plan, and I had brought it forward to Mr. Pinter and to the mayor and to the police chief, and asked them if they thought it would be something that they would be interested in, because I thought it would be something that we should look into. And then, at the time, I brought it to the Republican caucus and asked them if they would be interested in signing on the letter to make the request to the three departments on whether or not we should look into this. And the letter was signed by all 14 members of the Republican caucus at the time and submitted to the council. That's where it started from.
Just peripheral information for me to understand, but the other thing is that in several of the communications I received, and I received a number of them, and a lot of packets and a lot of reading, and I did some surfing on the net myself, and we have some contradictions, that one of them was that we would have access to a database that we don't have access to now. And as a layperson, I remember that the 9/11 was blamed in good part about lack of communications between law enforcement agencies. And I thought that that had been eliminated, and I see that the FBI handles the national information database that I'm sure that all police departments, law enforcement agencies use around the country. How would the database that we're going to have access to going to improve over this? And I've gone through the list, and most of the issues that we talk about, following warrants and things of that nature, are all listed on the FBI database. Through the chair to the chief.
Well, first of all, I haven't been trained in the ICE access database, and so I'm not entirely familiar with it or a good person to speak about how it works. But what I can tell you is, right now, when we need to query ICE, we have to work through a message center up in Vermont or New Hampshire or something, and there's a time delay in getting messages back and forth, and sometimes that time delay could cause somebody to be released from custody before we get an answer as to whether they should be detained or not. So I see that as an advantage. And number two, and again, I haven't been trained in it, but I understand this ICE database is very good fingerprint information, very good photographic information, very good historical information about the people that ICE has encountered, but there's also some Department of Homeland Security intelligence sharing that's done through the same network. Again, I haven't been trained in it, I can't elaborate any more than that, but I understand that that would give us another investigative tool.
If I may, with this program, we should establish benchmarks of where we are now. I think you alluded to the fact that we had a number of heinous crimes committed by various criminal illegal aliens in this country, and I was wondering how many, and would we use that as a benchmark and see over a period of time how that improved in our city, because we do have an 8% reduction in crime from the last report, I understand, through the chair to the chief, if you can.
I don't have any statistical information on the number of illegal immigrants in Danbury. We don't keep track of crimes or arrests by immigration status, so I don't have a lot of concrete statistical information to give you, so it would be difficult to say this is where we're at now and this is where we'll be two years from now.
Mr. Calender said, I actually made the comment about the heinous crimes, Mr. Levy, and I wasn't referring to illegal immigrants committing heinous crimes in Danbury. The issue was, they've committed crimes in their own country, and they're now here in Danbury, and they're not committing crimes here because they don't want to get caught. So whether or not you can develop a benchmark about how many people you can catch, I know in 2006, there were, I think there were three individuals we apprehended who were wanted for murder in their home country. Now, they hadn't committed murder here, so it wouldn't show up in our statistics, but they did commit murder in their own country. Those individuals, we don't want them here, and we don't want them walking among even other members of the undocumented community. It's not fair to them.
If I may, I was just, I wanted to see something of material factor that would say where we're going, what we're trying to do, and establish some benchmarks so we understood that. Generally, I'm in favor of, I think we have a reciprocating type of agreement with Canada right now, and I'm in favor of that, exploring that further.
Yeah, I just want to correct you right there. I wasn't referring to the reason why they're here.
And if I may, to the Corporation Council, I was looking at the Charter 6-9, and in reading the Charter, it mentions the laws that relate to our police department and its function. And it talks about the state laws, and it talks about the ordinances, but it leaves out any kind of utilization of our personnel to enforce federal law. And I also went to the Home Rule Act and looked in the Home Rule Act as well, and Charter 98, municipal powers. And they as well avoided mentioning federal powers because they wanted to retain the sovereignty of states. I looked at your opinion, and you made reference to the police powers in general, that they were wide in their latitude. And if they are so wide in latitude, why do we need any approval? Why don't we just do what we, administratively, what we want to do?
Wide in latitude, Councilman, is exactly what the ICE Access Program provides. The limitations you mentioned in the Charter, and by the way, the other sections, there's another section of the Charter that addresses this issue as well, and that's the section that I referenced before, where the common council may, upon the recommendation of the mayor, authorize entry into an arrangement or an agreement with federal authorities. Clearly, that section of the Charter permits the implementation, adoption and implementation of this program. In addition, the federal statutory law that created this opportunity for not only Danbury, but all of the other police divisions and states that have adopted this, they probably all have similar, if you will, I look at it as a restriction, similar language in their Charter. And that language in the Charter you quoted implied, or at least one could infer reasonably, that based upon the inherent police power that's been a part of recognized law for 100 years or more, that in fact, the police chief, any police chief, any police authority is designated and authorized to use forces and facilities of other agencies in order to implement their tasks. In addition, the ICE Access Authorization that's before you is a very specific federal pronouncement and enactment. There's no question in any way that the police chief in Danbury hasn't the authority to review, negotiate, and execute an agreement like that which is proposed. There's no question about that authority in my mind.
Yeah, I'm sure that he does have that authority in, as well, he could act in an administrative way to do whatever he has to, and I think that's the reference to police powers that was primarily accepted within the legal community. But in this case, the common council being the legislative body, and there's no money involved here, no land transfer, no value other than a training program, it's somewhat different.
Mr. Levy, the mayor has an additional comment, if you please.
The only thing I can say to that, I just want to point out that your assessment sheet, the 287G assessment sheet, the first question they asked, that specifically asked is, has this been vetted through your political entity? Now, vetted is a vague term, it could mean anything, but I think we have a responsibility in the terms of having a full public debate and public disclosure on such an important issue, that it be vetted before the council, and also that the initial request did originate before the council to begin with. So certainly, that was really the rationale for that. I recognize that probably, a good argument could be made that the issue didn't have to come before the council at all. So I think if that's your point, it's well taken.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll take somebody from this side. Calendino?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Earlier this evening, I asked Assistant Chief Shanahan to give me an update on an arrest which happened, I believe, within the last few days. Through the chair, I would like Chief Shanahan to give us a status on what the investigative end of the police department found out about, further about this incident.
What Councilman Calendino was referencing was the article from the News Times, Police blotter several days ago, the arrest of a man who police said had three DUIs, three identities. Councilman Calendino asked me what the status was of that case. I said additional research had been done, and we found that this particular individual had several arrests, I believe four misdemeanor arrests and at least five traffic tickets, all using different names that we were able to identify through our system, and that information was forwarded by one of the field supervisors who did that research and forwarded to the prosecuting attorney. So that case is in the courts before us.
Thank you very much, Assistant Chief. Thank you, Your Honor.
Anybody else on this side? Mr. Cheneys?
My question is going to relate to more to trust and fear. I mean, during this whole debate, I read a lot of documentation here, and it all boiled down to trust. And one of the questions, again, I will have, I have several of them, by the way, one of them is, what do you have in place to help bridge that gap between the community and your department as far as trust goes? To the chief, to the mayor, anybody could question?
We have a community services division that's charged with reaching out to different segments of the community, and that's actually a responsibility between every one of us that wear the Danbury police uniform.
So you don't think that this program will interfere with that bridge?
Like I said in my remarks, this is a very emotional issue on both sides of the debate, and I think at the end of the day, neither side's going to be happy because they have unrealistic expectations, and I think part of the fear and part of the paranoia is unrealistic expectations about what the police are going to do in this instance. And I want to reiterate, our focus is on crimes, catching criminals, and very specific crimes, very specific criminals.
And again, at least in my opinion, I think our impact is to focus on the public perspective on this as well. Well, I know you're going, looking at the criminal aspect, and I think we need to look at the public side as well, how they interpret it, because we're the ones who are going to be fielding their phone calls, so.
Certainly, I certainly understand that.
So the other question, again, reading the MOU here, is one of the things I do offer is.
Cheneys, through the chair, please.
Through the chair. Again, is community outreach that they have, that the LEA at its discretion shall engage? Do you have any plans or working on what type of community outreach that you'll use?
We have no specific plans at this point, but we could hold classes, we could hold seminars, we could hold community meetings, we could reach out to all those communities. We, like I said, we have a division that does that, and that's going to be incumbent upon us to make this work successfully as part of that community outreach. That's going to be important on our part.
Through the chair, again, again, through the MOU here, it also says a steering committee shall be created. Again, the mayor might be the better person to ask. Is there any indication that you allow any members of the public to be part of that steering committee? Or that would be strictly law enforcement? Or that would be strictly law enforcement agency?
No, no, I think it's, that's important that there are members of the public somehow engaged in the process. It's a little early to do that since we don't have the signed MOU yet, but assuming that there's an MOU that's executed, then I think there's a lot of value, particularly when it comes to communication in terms of what the trained officers are looking for and really what their function is in terms of this training. So no question about it, there's some definite benefits to that. No question about that residents should be part of that greater discussion.
Through the chair. Again, in reading some of the handouts that were given, I know Chief Baker, he gave us a lot of positives from other communities and also the public gave us a lot of negatives from the communities as well. One of the aspects is the economic factor in all this. Again, I guess it was in New Jersey where the economic factor became so great they had to abandon the program. What good things would you have in place to protect, I guess, the economic factor in this? I guess the mayor may could address that.
Yeah, the only thing I want to say, and that particular issue in New Jersey, I think it was Riverside, I think was the name of the community, that wasn't the two eighty-seven G program though. That was the Hazelton ordinances they put in place, the housing, those. We don't have any plans to do that. Those are, in my view, unconstitutional ordinances that were put in place that mandated who you could rent to, they mandated certain zoning functions, they weren't really involved with the ICE Access Program. And certainly, those aren't really ordinances that we believe frankly meet the constitutional test and we haven't promoted them here.
Follow up. So you don't think this program will have a negative impact within our businesses, within our downtown?
Well, I think it'll have a negative impact. I think it'll have, I think if you talk to undocumented residents, and I have, and you talk to them and you ask them if they want criminals living among them, the resounding answer is no. That's what they tell us.
A couple of questions regarding uncost and alternative flow over. I guess Chief Baker said you're going to bring two or three off detectives to the training, which is a five-week training program. I guess it's, what provision would you have in place to replace those two detectives while they're on training? Will you have promotion from within to replace them? Or they're due to be reassigned amongst the other detectives?
We'll have to prioritize the work of the detectives. We'll have to farm it out to other detectives while they're away. We may have to use some overtime to be sure that, you know, we maintain the level of service. There's a lot of different ways we can address that, but that is one of my concerns is, you know, I don't know if we can train all the Special Investigative Division detectives because we've got that unit for a five or six week period. I can't afford to do that, so that is a consideration in mind, very mindful of what you're speaking of.
Thank you.
And I just want to say, that was our recommendation. Our recommendation is we send a couple of officers down to assess the training, go through the training, come back before it's done. And it seems like the program's working, then over a period of time, rotate people.
Chaney's? Mr. Arcauti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to direct a question to the Corporation Council, if I may, please. I know, Mr. Pinter, when we enter these agreements and then they're continued by the office, if there are modifications done to the MOU, is it possible that it can come back to the Common Council for review rather than allowing just the police department to do that?
It's always possible if the legislature so directs. However, the memorandum of understanding, at least the language about modification seems to imply that the designated authority, having been given that authority, will continue to work with ICE in the event there is any modification. I would say to you, if there's a significant term or condition, such as the ICE wants a thirty-year agreement, terminable only by ICE, for example, that might be something you'd want to see again. But if, for example, the typical modifications would probably be particulars within the program that are best suited for the police to make a determination on, probably technical items, how often the New Haven office might visit, you know, tweaking a particular component of the program to make it better, things like that.
And I know, it was discussed that, through the chair, to all the folks there, that it was either, that the program is on or off. Is there a provision to suspend this, just suspend the program? Because we just, previously we just discussed, the program is either on or it was terminated. Is there a provision to just suspend?
Through the chair, there is. In fact, one or other party can suspend it orally, simply by notifying ICE or ICE, I guess, to Danbury that for this reason or the other, we'd like to put this on hold while we examine something. The other, the other condition or term in the agreement is that the memorandum can be terminated at will by either party formally.
And another issue that was not touched upon at all, regarding U.S. government grants. I mean, there are, there's a point system, I have some paperwork here regarding a point system for U.S. government grants. I was, through the chair, if we could discuss it with the chief, is it possible, do you think that the city of Danbury would be more, even more eligible for grants regarding our law enforcement duties?
Right now, there's not a lot of federal grants out there for law enforcement. I'm only familiar with one that we're receiving, the Burn Grant, based on our crime. I hope that changes. As a matter of fact, I met with Congressman Murphy, one who's in town today, and that was one of the very issues I discussed with him, is the lack of federal support for local law enforcement there was ten years ago. And so I hope that changes and I'd be speculating about whether that would increase our chances of successfully getting a grant.
Through the chair again. I understand that through the ICE computer system, that there's even a more advanced fingerprint identification program involved with that. Will we have access to that near instant information? As I understand now, it would take several hours and if there is a person detained, that person would stay detained until we receive information back. It could take several, you know, under our present system, as I understand, would take several hours. If we have this ICE computer system with our ICE-trained officers, would we have access to that near instant communication for fingerprint evaluation and recognition?
I haven't been trained in the ICE access, or the ICE database, but that's my assumption, especially trained officers would have that access to that.
Is it possible for us to find out from our agent from ICE? On that?
I don't need the microphone, but thank you. My understanding is that there are several databases that we use outside of the National Crime Information Computer that the FBI, we give information to. That instantaneous system with just a fingerprint or using facial recognition technology, we have that, it's a live database. And my understanding is the other departments that have entered into the ICE Access Program have access to that equipment and have access to that database. That's my understanding.
Through the chair, to the chief again. Chief, I have a receipt of a, of a Danbury Police Department incident report from 2004, July the seventh, regarding a serial killer that was, that was located here in Danbury and apprehended. This guy was from Macedonia. I read this report, I'm absolutely stunned about this here. Had it not been for the diligence of two, probably the finest police officers that I've ever, that I've ever known, by the way, I served twenty-three years in the Danbury Police Department, so I know these fellows, Detective Trompetta, Detective Martin, that this guy was taken off our streets. Now, perhaps our ICE agent can help us out with this. Would it be easier for us to locate these guys, get them off our streets, make our city safer? This is public information. It's stunning. This is available to any members of the council who care to read. This guy killed two, possibly three people in Macedonia, located here and taken out, taken back to Macedonia. Would this ICE Access help us out in locating these people?
Counselor, I didn't work on that particular-
I realize that.
But the ability to instantly identify those people who are in the country, whether they're here legally or illegally, allowing to detain those people. In fact, they have Interpol warrants in one hundred countries, having that information instantly available to you, that's not necessarily the FBI interested in. I would imagine it's a very critical law enforcement tool, Chief Baker, and one of you want to have.
Thank you. I have to say that in this past month, that we've been dealing with this, I spoke to persons on both sides of this issue. And regarding the folks, there are quite a few, the folks that I spoke to on the telephone, folks that I spoke to in person, the newspaper accounts, the opinions to the people, the folks that came to our last Common Council meeting that spoke. What struck me on that was not one of those folks that were against the police department being involved in this ICE agreement, not one mentioned a lack of confidence or professionalism in our police department. And I think that's a very important issue, that both sides of this issue, at least in the folks that I spoke to, and there have been quite a few, all seem to have the confidence in our police department. I know I have the confidence in our police department, not just because I work there, but I have confidence in our police department. I know they're going to do a good job with this and we should all take that into consideration. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
See Barry?
Thank you, Mr. President. I don't have a question for anybody, I have a statement, I guess. In the, some four years that many of us have served on the council, we certainly didn't know the answers to all questions that came out. But we had the knowledge, that we had representatives that we could talk to for guidance. We had a legal issue, we talked to Les Pinter, Bob Yaman. We have an engineering issue, we could talk to our engineers, public works and so on and so forth. I think the dialogue tonight is very helpful. I think that discussion can continue to go on. Yeah, I got it.
Stand down while we change the tape. Thank you.
All right, tell me if you can, I think.
Okay, we're back on.
Anyway, I think the discussion is very worthwhile and we can continue to do that. My comment here is that, as I stipulated earlier, we would resort to looking to others for information, for guidance. And as my colleague, Mr. Arcauti, just stated, he's got a lot of respect, a lot of regard for our police department, as I do as well. If I have a question dealing with the law on this particular issue, I go to the chief. And that said, I'm prepared to make a motion on this issue and we can continue the dialogue and discussion afterwards. But right now, I would recommend, I'd like to make a motion to recommend that the Common Council authorize the chief of police to enter into an agreement with the federal government to permit the participation in the ICE Access.
Second.
Okay, the motion was made and seconded by Mrs. Stanley. Under discussion, we'll continue with our discussion of this issue. Work our way back down. Mrs. Diggs, you have your hand up next?
Yes, I do have a question and it really relates to the language barrier. I know Attorney Pinter, you had mentioned in your remarks on page two and three, most of what we see on page two and three is just standard language for the ICE MOA. And I just, really just have a technical question for you where it says on page three, the power and authority to interrogate any person believed to be, or the power and authority to arrest without warrant. How do you interrogate anyone who doesn't speak English? And also on page four, where it says the nomination of the personnel who will be ultimately trained under ICE, it says, all candidates must have at least two years of LEO work experience. And it goes on to some of the other experiences that the officers must have, but it doesn't illustrate anything about any type of language that the officers must possess, such as being bilingual, such as being fluent in Spanish or perhaps Portuguese. Is there anything in here that would address this? Or once again, is this the standard ICE language?
Thank you, Mrs. Diggs. There is a response to that, that the ICE program addresses and it's a very important one. The training program, it's approximately five weeks' worth of training and in the packet of materials which you may have before you, the training components are rather complex and also broad. You'll see in there that there's sensitivity to nationality, there is some language sensitivity components in there as well. There is a training component in general that recognizes that if a trained police officer can't speak the language in question, then he or she can ask for backup assistance to provide that. For example, there was a case in the, I think it was the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, where a police officer, a state police officer, made a stop on a lonely road and because he couldn't speak Spanish in that case, he did what he could, held the individual in temporary custody until a backup officer showed up and could translate. And that allowed, and it passed court scrutiny, by the way, it allowed for proper translation of the inquiry or interrogation and of the subsequent arrest. So there are means, such as those, where you would have the capability. What you would want, of course, is to have a language barrier which would prevent either side from availing themselves of the rights that they have. More importantly, of course, the defendant needs to know, the defendant or the person questioned would need to know that they can translate their concerns properly. The officer would want to put himself in a position frankly where he can't speak the language of the individual without somebody assisting.
And Mr. Chairman, let me just add, and I know Captain Weston and Lieutenant Fisher might have, we have a number of translators who are already serving the Danbury Police Department. This is not a new issue for us. If it's just a straight investigation and we have somebody who doesn't speak English, we have several, more than several officers who are fluent in Spanish. Some of the other languages do become problematic, Portuguese, from time to time, we look for translators, as well as languages from other parts of the world. So we do have a pretty good cadre of interpreters and translators that are available to us right now, that we deal with right now if there's an ongoing investigation.
Yeah, I do have another question. And this is addressed to Chief Baker. Chief Baker, in your letter dated December the twentieth, it says, "The focus of our ICE participation would be on crimes committed by illegal immigrants. These include gangs and organized crime, number two, drug smuggling, three, human trafficking, four, document fraud, five, identity and benefit theft, and worksite investigation." As I was looking at the training curriculum for the five-week training session, could you perhaps elaborate, or maybe the individual from ICE could more than likely elaborate on this? In terms of the five-week training session, it seems to cover probably four of these areas, but could you address the issue on the worksite investigation as well as the human trafficking? I didn't see, I'm a trainer, I didn't see anything where you would be trained for worksite investigation in this five-week program, as well as human trafficking?
Those components were discussed with Special Agent Charge from Blossom when he came down and met with our senior staff. I got the impression during that discussion that they're talking about large work sites where they might catch, you know, large groups of illegal immigrants engaged, such as like a textile mill or a poundery or a rendering plant or something like that. I didn't get the impression that they had the resources to come to Danbury and, you know, chase down individual employers. They sounded like large-scale operations that, maybe Mr. Marley could elaborate further about that particular component.
I recently was training at the last two eighty-seven G class we had up in Burlington, Massachusetts, where we trained the Mass Department Corrections, some county sheriffs, some departments from Arkansas. I do recall human trafficking, I didn't teach that particular class, but I do remember sitting in on that class. And it had to do with sensitizing law enforcement officers and the issue of human trafficking, how to identify victims of human trafficking and to work with ICE in doing those investigations. With respect to worksite enforcement, I don't recall, I dodged that class for the afternoon, but I don't recall specifically that class on worksite enforcement, but I- but I don't recall specifically that class on worksite enforcement, but I think consistently what Chief Baker told you, whatever worksite enforcement ICE does throughout the length of it would be primarily an ICE law enforcement operation. All of our worksite enforcement so far that I'm aware have been predicated on federal criminal investigations. There may be a support component, for example, in Bedford operation, where I believe some local police officers provide security, but other than that, I'm not aware of any training that we give to local law enforcement for 2-17 or ICE access on how to do their own worksite enforcement. I'm not aware of that.
Mrs. Diggs, I just, in the literature, and there's quite a bit of literature out there, I do recall running into a provision or provisions where the ICE access program is intended to train officials not only in those areas specified in the ICE access program at large, but also to make them familiar with those areas of immigration enforcement that perhaps could come up sometime in the future, or that occur elsewhere, so that officers, trained officers, are at least familiar with these areas of issues, even if they don't have to deal with them directly every day, or at all. Worksite investigation and other areas such as that sometimes are related to other specified areas. And you'd want your trained officers to at least be aware of that, so if the ICE agent or agents come in, they say, for example, "We have a concern here, a worksite concern, we just want to make you aware of it," at least you'll have some level of training on the part of the local officers.
Mr. Marley, like I explained earlier, I'm going to let everybody have a first shot at this, and then we'll round for a second shot, once everybody's had their first opportunity to speak and answer a question. Mr. Perkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Through you to Mr. Marley. Mr. Marley, sir, would you please, sorry, explain to us the process that would typically help identify an undocumented person? Is there a process that you go through? Are there forms? Fingerprints? What happens when someone's just an interest?
Can I understand your question you're asking? How would an immigration customs officer normally identify someone as being unawed here in the United States?
Right.
In a person-to-person encounter, it would probably be asked a basic question. Very basic question of, "Where were you born? Where are you from?" Such with immigration questions, specific immigration status, what is your immigration status? How did you get to the United States behind any type of documents? Outside of a personal encounter, it would be through an immigration investigation through databases. You would supply an immigration enforcement officer with the name and date of birth of someone. We could check various databases to determine whether or not we have a record of that person unlawfully entering the United States. And if there were no record of that person ever unlawfully entering the United States, that person either would have entered the United States illegally, or would be a US citizen, and there's databases you can check to ascertain that.
Okay. If it was deemed that they were not a citizen, is there additional steps?
Well, if they encounter someone who is foreign-born, but not a United States citizen, it's important then to check the databases, how that person got into the country. They very well may be unlawfully. They could be unlawfully visiting on a valid visa. They may have entered the United States, but have overstayed that visa. They could have adjusted their status and now be a lawful permanent resident, have a green card, and be able to reside lawfully in the United States indefinitely. But with knowing certain biographical information, we can check those databases, which is part of the ICE access program, and instantly identify whether someone is in the United States lawfully.
Thank you. One follow-up. One more question, please. So based on that interview, would they become part of a system? Would they be, I guess, characterized as part of your identification system?
If we encountered someone who was unlawfully in the United States and we made an immigration arrest, and that in most circumstances, well, in many circumstances, is actually a discretionary decision by an immigration officer. There are a few categories of aliens unlawfully in the United States that we don't have any discretion, and that if we encounter them, we require to take those people into custody. They're mandatory custody under a section of the INA, known as 236. However, if there was an immigration arrest made, that person would be booked, just like any other type of arrest. Their picture would be taken, their fingerprints would be taken, and entered into the immigration database.
Okay. Thank you. One follow-up question.
Please proceed, Mr. Perkins.
Through you, Chief Baker. Is there a union representative here today, the representative police department?
Not that I'm aware of.
One more. Did I hear you say earlier that there were no statistics for illegal immigration crimes? Did we, I didn't hear it, did I?
I have no statistics, correct.
With you today, or the department?
We don't have them in the department. We don't track crime by immigration status.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Crumbett, I see you have your, I believe you had your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I've run three times as councilman in the Second Ward, and all three times, top issues were crime in our city, making our community a better place to live, and illegal immigration. I would say eight out of 10 doors that I knocked on, these were the concerns that were brought to my attention, and I believe many of the council members. So I asked myself, as a councilman in the ward, what should I do on this issue? It's political, it's a difficult decision. It's a difficult decision because we want to make sure that all the rights of all the individuals are protected. But I am a representative. Most of the calls and discussions that I've had with people have been positive towards the ICE access agreement. Now, if I'm supposed to represent those individuals within our city, then if I am going to vote in favor of this, I want the proper training, which is exactly what our officers will be receiving. When they do become, and my question, I guess, is to Chief Baker, after this training of five or six weeks, are they are considered agents? Is that correct?
I guess when they're engaged in immigration enforcement under ICE supervision, they call them agents, yes.
Okay. Will they, as agents, be able in turn, be able to come back to the city of Danbury and train other officers, for instance, on concerns that I have, our document fraud, and are they able to do that without those particular officers becoming agents?
I don't think that would be a problem. It's routinely done with other training matters for the police department, and this would just be another training opportunity where the person trained could share their expertise with their fellow officers and be a resource to them.
Okay, then, obviously, then this would only benefit not only the community, but also law enforcement itself. If we get, the more people we train, kind of an apparent effect, and, yes, you have to have trust in your police department, and what Mr. Arconti said is so true of the responses that I've also received from people on both sides of this issue. They have a deep trust in our police department. It seems like we know our police in this community, and no one could be prouder than myself or this council, but I do have that trust. That's why I will be voting in favor of this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Through the chair to the chief. Chief Baker, to begin with, I'd like to thank you for appearing here this evening and answering our questions. And I'd like to commend you on your effective management of law enforcement here in Danbury, and in particular, that roundup of drive-by thugs we read about who prey on individuals walking the streets. Good job on that. And also, we noticed that some of the arrests for traffic violations have gone up in Danbury in the Sixth Ward. I would like to thank you for your job on West Worcester Street and Park Avenue in Fry's Corner area. It has been a pleasure for my constituents, because we've been cracking down on some of that stuff. I'd like to echo the previous councilpeople's opinions about the police force, in particular, Councilman Arconti. We hold them in high regard. Now, I've got some questions that I need to answer, to ask before the next meeting for the council, and it will be at that meeting that we will decide what we're going to do with this particular motion. There's a motion on the floor, it's been seconded, and the motion is to recommend to the full council that we adopt the ICE program, and that it won't be adopted until we get to that meeting. So what I would like to do briefly, with permission of the chair, is just go back a little bit and sort of investigate the reports, the things that brought us here, and with, again, the permission of the chair, and I know I've seen you in interviews before, you admire brevity, I think we can get this, do this fairly quickly. In the interest of time, I've foregone complexity. I'll instead concentrate on some straightforward items that'll require a simple yes or no, or a most brief response, if that's okay with you. Okay, all right. You gave us, for the first report, some material, and I'd like to ask you where you got that from. I believe that came from the ICE website or ICE pamphlets, was that correct?
Came from an email from the Special Agent in Charge of Boston.
Okay, all right, thanks. And I've seen and heard you on several media outlets recently, this morning on CBS, you were on a couple of times today. You took an advocacy position on the petition, and I just need to know for the record, you're not in fact a petitioner for this particular question, is that correct? This was brought before the council by the Republicans in October. You mentioned tonight that you had talked to them about doing it, but you were not in fact the petitioner for this matter, is that correct?
No, this came to me from the council.
This came from you, so you?
No, it came to me from the council.
It came to you from the council, okay, all right. So the Republican caucus is the sole petitioner?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. Now, at that point in October, the caucus, the Republicans, I think it was President Cabo asked for separate 30-day reports from both you and Corporation Council. They would have been due, I guess, in November, and you, and the mayor, of course. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. For some reason, we didn't get anything back until two business days before the January meeting, that was about three months later. What happened? Why was, was this a routine, the holidays, that kind of thing?
The holidays and taking time to research the issue.
Okay.
I was approached by the mayor's office, and both by Corporation Council and the police department, that they needed more time in order to come up with an accurate report to us, and they asked me if that was a problem. And usually, our recommendations are for 30-day reports, don't necessarily get held to that because of weather restraints and things, other meetings that typically in planning, we wait for 30-day reports. We don't always get them in 30 days because of weather conditions and other things, information they're trying to gather, so not necessarily a problem. I was asked by all three departments if there was a problem with that, and I said, "No, I would rather make sure we had complete reports than something that was rushed and incomplete."
Okay. Chief, did you feel at any time, did you get the impression from anyone on the council that we on the council were not interested in gathering information about this petition, that somehow the fix was in, that we wanted a rubber stamp, that we, did we telegraph that to you, or did you think back in October that we wanted a full, in-depth report from you? And is that why you took the extra time to bring us that report?
That's my understanding, you wanted the complete report.
Okay, good, all right, thanks. Now, the material that you've given us, is it readily available? I just got a packet from you on, I think it was Thursday, and it seemed to be reprints from ICE material, you know, for websites and PowerPoint presentations and such. Why is that made available by ICE? Is it for education purposes, to help promote the program? What's the purpose of that material on their websites that you copied and gave to us?
I didn't copy anything off their website, and I can't speak for ICE as to why they put things on their website.
But the material that you gave us, did that come from your hand, or was that reprints from ICE material that you acquired somehow?
Material came to me in the form of an email from the Special Agent in Charge of the Boston Office.
Including the latest material that you've given us in your packet a few days ago?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So you have not written any of this material yourself? This did not come from your hand?
No.
Okay. One of the packets is a facts section, as you alluded to this evening. It asks and answers its own questions, that's here. But I don't see any material that you provided to us that asks or answers some other aspects of the program that we've seen and heard about on the news, other articles and other interviews, nothing you've mentioned, of course. But we've heard about early morning raids, the wrong house being broken into, innocent people being terrified, officers acting like cowboys, indeed, officers conducting arrests wearing cowboy hats, acting in a fashion that can best be charitably described as unprofessional. But I don't see any reports from you that touch on any of that, or the law enforcement agencies that want to terminate their relationship with ICE, who have testified before Congress about the failures of the program, that indeed may even be suing ICE nothing at all. So I don't see any information from anyone here, until tonight, until an hour ago, from anyone here, the petitioner, from you, Corporation Council, the mayor, that talks about their firsthand knowledge of the program. In other words, someone here in the city government that has given us information to date, with the exception of this evening's hearing, and I'm glad we're having this, how to increase the chance of success, how to avoid dangerous pitfalls, that sort of thing. Nowhere, at least hasn't been provided to me. Nothing even since I sent this to committee, unless someone else has gotten reports from people actually involved in ICE. I don't see anything from you that isn't ICE promotional material, and isn't designed to portray ICE in the best possible and most superficial light. And my question was going to be, was that because we simply don't have in our government any firsthand experience with ICE? I know that you came from Wisconsin, from Racine, and I know that there are terrible problems in those communities out there, particularly with cross-border, whatever you want to call it, interdiction and gang activity. Have you guys, in Racine, have you had any firsthand experience with ICE? Are you, you're probably in contact with those people now, are they thinking about starting a program like this, or what?
I'm not familiar with what they're contemplating with the guard ICE in Racine, but if you'd like some firsthand experience, we've been working with ICE for a long, long time, and that's why I have a senior staff here, they've got close to 150 years of Danbury police experience, could speak to you about anything you'd like.
And I would like to talk about that because several times in your interviews, and also in your reports, you have stated that if we accept the ICE access program, if we accept the recommendation from the staff and from you, and approve this, we'll be formalizing things that we're already doing on an informal basis now. So in fact, we do sort of have some experience with some of these aspects of the program if we don't have actual experience underneath an MOU, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Let me ask you this. Let's say that this doesn't happen, or let's say there's another community in Connecticut that is looking at this right now, and they decide not to do this, but they are still operating with ICE the same way that we are in Danbury, would there be any change? Could you still effectively bust crime in Danbury? And, you know, we see these things in the paper all the time, because you've arrested them, I have to assume if you're arresting them, the process right now is working to some extent. So if, if to avoid some of the pitfalls that we've heard other communities have experienced underneath this program, we decide not to accept the recommendation of the petitioner at the next meeting, and we do not, in fact, do an MOU, will we still be able to maintain a safe and crime-free city? And we know that the percentage of violent crimes have dropped in Danbury, and things are moving in the right direction. In your opinion, is this necessary to sign on to, or can we still maintain effective deterrence without doing it? And that's my question, thank you.
My opinion, we'd lose something, and like I said in my remarks, the biggest benefit to the city of Danbury, I think, in terms of our participation, is the training. This is a very complex area, the law requires extensive training, and if our officers are going to be involved with ICE on an informal basis, they're not going to have that training. They're not going to have access to the databases. This is another tool in our toolbox to catch criminals, and will that mean the crime's going to go up? No, I don't think so, but I think that in the best interest of the community, it's something we should get involved in.
Okay, thank you. I have one further question, Corporation Council. Retraining. No one is more in favor of training than I am in Danbury. I've gone on the public record of saying the last couple of weeks, I think it's very important, and I would like our officers to train with ICE as soon as they possibly can. I understand that the slots are hard to come by. It may take a few months to do that. My question, Les, to you, is can we participate in the training without participating in the other aspects of ICE? Or do we have to have that MOU, and in for a penny, in for a pound? We have to do it all?
Paul, there, Councilman Rotello, I'm sorry, they, through the chair, they're inextricably intertwined because the federal authorities that enacted this program contemplated that in order to properly in order to properly act as cross-designated agents, local officers, that is, they would need the training from people who know how to implement those, those particular programs. So without the training, you, you'd really have individuals who, as you said before, kind of doing what they do now, maybe a little bit of tweaking on the upside, but they wouldn't have the, the training in the enforcement procedures and the sensitivity procedures. They wouldn't be, if you will, rubbing elbows with individuals who are very facile in this area, and are able to provide that kind of guidance, which then would be brought back to Danbury. So I think they're, they're inextricably intertwined.
Okay, so you're, you're saying that, that without the MOU, they can't get the training, and without the training, that they'll not be quite as effective as they would be with the training? I mean, I'll stipulate that. But is, to your knowledge, there's no way that we can get that training without participating in the rest of the program? We can't just send a couple of guys every year to wherever they're going to go, I don't even know where they go for the training, but wherever that happens to be, Virginia, Boston, whatever, we can't just do that without participating?
It doesn't seem so, Councilman, because all of the, all of the literature and research that, that we've done, that I've done, indicates that the program itself is, is self-contained. So you can't extract the training, just do a little bit of training, and not the rest of the program. You really have to have a, a genuine intent. And actually, the federal law, the federal statute providing this program states training throughout, states, here's what you do, here's what you become, you become an agent after training, here's the training program, five weeks. So it's very clear, it seems to me, that, that they're together.
I see, all right, thank you, thank you.
Mr. Visconti had his hand up, did you start a question?
Sorry?
You have my hand up yet?
Okay, did you want to place your hand up, or?
Now, from personal experience, I think people on both sides of this issue have, some people have been hypocrites. Some people who are proponents of this proposal for ICE Access, I think, are xenophobes. I've been on the receiving end of at least one email indirectly sent to me regarding my ethnic background that I responded to. On the other hand, I think some of the opponents of this proposal themselves have been hypocrites by basing their opposition on the fact that this is the city of Danbury purportedly engaging in federal law enforcement activities, and that the law enforcement should be left up to other levels of government. However, some of those very same people protest and object when the federal government enforces these laws that we're speaking about, some of the people on both sides, and some of those hypocrites are in this audience. So I think for this council to make a decision, it's necessary to cut through the rhetoric and to look at the facts, which is what these council members are doing their best to do on both sides of this issue, including those gentlemen who are in front of us today trying to answer our questions. As the chief said, I don't think a vote one way or the other is going to make nearly everybody happy, and some people say that compromise means everyone goes away a little bit disappointed, and what is the result? And we have talked, many of us have asked many different questions, sort of overlapping with each other. And what I want to try to do, and I hope not to be repetitious on this, is ask some very direct questions, and ask those who can to just walk me very methodically, but as succinctly as possible, step by step. The first question I have is, very specifically, can someone compare for me the specific things that we can do now? Give me bullet points, one, two, three, four, and those things very specifically that we would be able to do should we enter into the MOU, one, two, three, four. I've heard them answered piecemeal, and through the chair, to whoever wants to field this, I think probably part of it would be to the representative from ICE, as well as to chief and Corporation Council. And, and all due respect to everybody, I don't want a lot of background explanation, just walk me through those very elemental steps, please.
I think that the difference between the way we exist now and what would happen if we entered into the treatment, number one is the training. Five weeks of training, and we wouldn't get that if we were, continue to maintain an informal relationship. Number two is the ICE supervision. The ICE will supervise police officers when they're engaged in immigration activity. I think that's important because this is a complex area of the law. We won't have access to ICE databases or intelligence information. We won't have the intelligence information, we'll have to work through a message center. We would still probably have access to ICE manpower and ICE equipment because we have a very good informal working relationship with them. We wouldn't have access to asset forfeiture if we didn't participate in the program. And I think the biggest benefit of a formal relationship is better communication with ICE to eliminate some of the problems that some of the other council people have talked about in terms of the cowboys mentality and the complaints and the violation of rights. I think if we maintain a formal relationship, we'll have better communications with ICE.
The chief submitted all that.
Okay. I, just to prepare the chair, I have several follow-ups, so through the chair. With regard to the ICE supervision, I have a question, both to the chief as well as to the ICE representative, if necessary. What specifically does that supervision mean? And then a second part of that question is, can, under this MOU, ICE, through the ICE Access Program, basically commandeer our law enforcement officers to engage solely in something that ICE itself decides? Let's say if this is not incident to an arrest or an otherwise lawful detention for a non-immigration matter, come in, Detective Smith has his training, he's now ours, we're taking him on, on a raid, for lack of a better word, through the chair.
I don't think that could happen, but let me defer to the ICE representative.
I mean, how, how you use your police officers and when you use them is certainly, will always be up to the Danbury Police Department. By, by entering into ICE Access, a 287G program, doesn't give us any authority to commandeer or hijack a Danbury police officer and assign him different duties. As I understand the program, in the normal course of conducting criminal investigations, patrol operations, if an immigration aspect of a case presents itself, Danbury police officers under 287G have the legal authority to conduct an immigration investigation. That investigation will be supervised by an immigration officer in either Park or New Haven, or in other offices, who can be able to support that person, answer follow-up questions, have access to our attorneys, like my cell questions, to make sure that everything's being done properly in accordance with law.
A follow-up, thank you, through the chair, to the representative. When you speak about immigration investigations, are there elements, either to you, sir, or to the chief? I believe the chief mentioned immigration investigations could be then done under the ICE Access Program, where currently they either aren't done or can't be done, I'm not sure of the distinction, but that the information accessible through the database would allow for, quote, "immigration investigations"? Can somebody clarify that point for me, please?
Just briefly, I know there's a few lawyers in the audience here somewhere. Outside of the 10th Circuit Court of Appeals, other circuit courts, I believe the Ninth Circuit's spoken about state and local officers being allowed to enforce lawfully criminal violations. The Tenth Circuit, I believe, is the only circuit in the United States that has explicitly, and I think the corporate counsel talked about, the inherent state authority of the state to enforce all law to include federal law. So outside of the Tenth Circuit, it's an open question whether state and local law enforcement officers now settled in the courts actually have that authority. So if the department wants to sort of go out and live a little bit, and wants to exercise that authority without having well-settled case law in their circuit, they can do that. I would question why they'd want to do that, and being on the cutting edge of the case law, right? So 287G gives that delegation of authority explicitly in the law to a, an agency that wants to do that.
And to the chair, for my follow-up, again, with regard to the database, does that contain aliases?
Certainly, and just, just to recap again, we talked about the FBI maintains sort of the premier criminal database on people who are arrested in the United States. We contribute to that database, we contribute to people who we reported previously, who we have warrants for, who are presently fugitives, and people that we're looking for. We contribute that information. But our database is still sort of the premier database on people who are here in the country lawfully, here in the country unlawfully, we have photographs, fingerprints, aliases, and other intelligence information that might be valuable to the chief when conducting criminal investigation.
Thank you. With regard, again, going back to the database, is there, I think there was discussion of sort of real-time access, I want to understand a little bit more of the timeframe needed to process a, a query that goes from a municipal police officer to, or through, a message center to ICE, as opposed to the way it would work under the ICE Access Program from a timing standpoint, as well as the substance of the information? Now versus under an MOU?
Now we have to submit to the message center as much information as we have available to us. Theoretically, they're supposed to respond in 20 minutes, half hour, sometimes those responses are two or three hours. They get back to us with what information matches our query versus what's in their database. We'll be able to make that query instantly into the database under this system.
Thank you, chief. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I'll reserve my further questions.
Mr. Visconti.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. To Chief Baker, if I may, through the chair. Chief, have you had any feedback at all from either the patrol officers or anyone from the union as to what their feelings may be to, to the changes that we were talking about?
I heard of one inquiry about changing in working conditions, and I guess that's something we'd have to look at, but I view this as a training opportunity, I'd have to post it like I post any other training opportunity.
Follow-up, what was the, the, or why was the training changed from a patrol officer to the detective division? Was that for specific reasons?
No, it was always my intent to train somebody in the detective bureau, they're the ones that conduct criminal investigations. Patrol officers make the initial reports, but once the initial report is made, they're turned over to detectives for follow-up, and I see the most value of the program in the detective bureau, or in investigations, the special investigations, or the youth bureau, somewhere up where they work on crimes all day long.
I mean, one, one follow-up, two, Deputy Chief. Terry, you brought up the incident where the gentleman had four or five different aliases that was arrested a while ago. With the timeframe that it took to get this guy arraigned and, and find out what his name was or wasn't, if he was legal or not legal, non-legal, is there any way you could, you could give us how long it, it took you to do that? If it was, or what the timeframe may be under the conditions of we were working with a database from ICE?
I think, reference to that specific investigation, if memory serves me, that was the result of one officer checking through the database. When, when a person is placed in a custodial arrest, fingerprinted and photographed, certain biographical information is entered, and we get information back. That officer checked the aliases and did some homework, and we were able to find three. Subsequently, we were finding three previous arrests, I should say, using variations of that person's name. Subsequent to that, a day later, a patrol sergeant on his own initiative went through our, our records, our arrest logs, our ticket books, our computer files that we do have, and I don't know if Mr. Anderson's here, I don't want to take any shots at our computer system, but he, he did, he did the best he could with what he had, and he was able to find several more instances where the same individual, maybe a variation on the name, same date of birth, same other, same address, same other location. So it, in short, whether or not this would apply as far as the, the 287G Program, I can't answer that. I, I can't say for certain this person was legal or, or not legal in this country. I just know that this was a person that we do have, what I can say for a fact is this is a person we've had contact with at least nine times, and he's given us a different name on each occasion of the nine that different officers have interacted with him.
But the timeframe, would your, and I don't want to put you on the spot, but I will, in your opinion, would be shorter if we were under the database and got the information from, from ICE, which would be more than what we would have now?
Yes, from what the ICE representative has stated, that his database can do in terms of photographs, fingerprints, it, it would seem to me that it certainly have been a much quicker transition to identify exactly who this person was.
Thank you. One more, if I may, follow-up to the gentleman from, from ICE. You mentioned that the supervision would come from our, our police department. Could you just reiterate, again, I don't know whether, I miss what you were saying, but when you, when you step in, when your field agent steps in, does he actually take over the investigation, or where does, are we still in charge? What, what happens there?
My, my, the answer I gave earlier to the previous question was that we don't hijack officers and have them do our work. If an ICE-trained officer, trained under 287G, initiates an immigration investigation, we support and supervise that. There's a review process, even in our own agency, whenever we make an immigration arrest, that paperwork and information is provided to the supervisor to double-check and make sure that we're following our own internal regulations and that the arrest was proper. And in fact, we're not arresting a United States citizen or law-abandoned resident. And so that supervisory process is continued for a 287G officer. It's still that officer's investigation, but that review process and supervision process is the same that we would do for our own officers.
Thank you. If I may, Mr. President, like, like everyone else here on this dais, my phones are ringing off the hook, and I've talked to people in person, and listened to both sides of the situation. And I, I really have to say that I reiterate my colleague, Mr. Arconte's talk on the police department, they do a really, really great job, and this was told to me by both sides of, of front and con issue here. And I just think that at this point in time, I, I would be in favor of the, the issue. Thank you.
Anybody else for the first time, who hasn't spoke for the first time? Wishing to speak? Mr. Riley, for the second time.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. And I'll try to make it very short, thank you. This, as we know, is a very sensitive issue, and rightly so. And I think that, I think there's two parts that I, I sort of look at. One is the, the issue of the police department. I too have a lot of faith in the department, and if we are able to give them extra database, whatever, to, to facilitate a, a more rapid, whatever, criminal investigation, so be it, it would be good. On the other hand, you have a, you have a human element out there that, I mean, that you have to have passion, even though we know what is happening in this great city of ours, but you still have to have passion, compassion for people that have, have moved to this country illegally, only to find something that is a little bit better than what they had. Back in 1976, we had the race riots, and we, they were very difficult, and I was teaching at that time, and we decided to do something very wonderful in this town when we had those riots. We formed a task force and, of community leaders, and, and we got together, and, and we solved our problem with regard to racism, blatant racism, and out of that, one of the things that came from that was the alternative high school, which is the best, the best alternative school in the state of Connecticut, if not in New England. I'm not biased, but here's what I, if I could be so direct, I would like to, if we can, and I'm going to put forth just a request, that could we not, along with the element that would help our police officer, could we not, could we not have a task force that would be formed by community leaders, also taking in the Spanish Learning Center, also taking in those people that are, are those, that are in the realm, so to speak, of being illegal, but yet they want to, they want to do, in most cases, what is right? And going along with that, we could form that task force that would begin to take a look at how, how we could, in a collaborative way, with the police department and with the city, to get people to understand the so-called American way, English is, is the la, language of the land, but yet you must retain your mother language too. What is it all about in terms of doing what is right with a license, getting a proper license, getting your insurance, et cetera, et cetera? And if you would form a task force that would maybe be an add-on- And if you would form a task force that would maybe be an add-on to this access with ICE, I think that would help to alleviate some of the fear and, and some of the feelings that might be that this could tend to be a racial thing, which I don't even want to go there at all regarding that, which I don't think it is. But if we could be, do something like that, I think it would be wonderful. We're, I'm going to end up with this. We were thrust into this by the federal government, dropping the ball. They're not going to pick it up. And consequently, we in the, in the communities have to do something. But we got to put our heart into it. We have to make sure that whatever we do, we do in a fair way. So bring everybody on board, get us together, and set that task force in place. And you know what? Down the line between access with ICE, ICE Access, and the task force, I think things could be very wonderful, and I think things could be worked out. Thank you, Mario, very much.
Thank you, Mr. President. Quick question to Mr. Marley. The MOU which the chief gave us, actually it's referred to as the MOA here, page three, bullet three, kind of jumped out at me, I'm going to ask you about it. It says, "The power and authority to arrest without warrant for felonies which have been committed and which are cognizable under any law of the United States regulating the admission, exclusion, expulsion, or removal of aliens, notification of such arrest must be made to ICE within 24 hours." So we apparently arrest an alien without a warrant, and we tell you guys within a day or so, that's under designation of authorized functions. Would you just explain to me what arrest without warrant means in this instance?
My understanding is, no different than other law enforcement authority, if certain crimes are committed within the presence of a law enforcement officer, they can make a warrantless arrest. They don't need to apply to the judge in order to get an arrest warrant. And I believe the paragraph you're talking about is the same, that under certain circumstances, certain crimes, under federal law, cognizable, you don't, you can make a warrantless arrest without applying an arrest warrant to the judge.
If I may, are you saying that if you see someone breaking into a store, you can arrest them? Or are you saying that you might have, somebody might have told you that somebody broke into a store two weeks ago, so you can arrest them without a warrant? Where are we on that one? You see someone in the commission of a crime, certainly you can stop them or prevent them or do whatever you need to do, which is every day, bank robbers, whatever. But it says, "which have been committed." It doesn't say which are in the process of being committed. So I'm just trying to nail that one down. Is this a, somebody drops a dime and you guys roll in and arrest somebody, or this would only be exclusive to the prevention of the commission of a crime happening in the present tense without a warrant?
I haven't read that specific portion of the memorandum of agreements. I'm not clear whether, I haven't looked at it, whether it's regarding the law enforcement authority to arrest for a felony committed in their presence, whether it's talking about a warrantless arrest later on. My understanding, the way we conduct criminal investigations, is that if we have probable cause to make an arrest, and a violation has been committed past tense, that we apply to a federal judge to get an arrest warrant or search warrant for evidence of that crime?
Sure, that's how it's done now. But this, this would seem to negate that, so hence my concern. Attorney, if I may, go ahead, sure.
Councilman Rotello, the, in reading through the actual federal law and other literature related to this particular question, my answer to you would be that, in this area of, of law and potential felonies that are committed, the intent is, because criminal immigration violations involve individuals who either would flee rapidly or are difficult to detect, and so you need a heightened ability to arrest quickly, as opposed to the standard case where there's property involved, you have time, maybe you get some information about something going on, you have a couple of days, you go get a warrant from the court. These cases, the civil and criminal immigration cases, have to do really with quick action, rapid determinations, and detentions and arrests that are necessary at a moment's notice. That's, that's the gleaning from the information and the review of the law that I have.
That's kind of what I thought, yeah. Do you, if I may follow up, do you think that we'll be seeing a lot of this? Do you think this will become a routine manner, arrests in Danbury without warrants?
I doubt it, only because with proper training, number one, with proper training, I'm sure it'll be explained to the local cross-designated agents, here's how you arrest without a warrant in accordance with law. You can't just go in and raid people's homes, for example. You have to have a basis for making such an arrest, you have to have a timeframe which makes it necessary, and frankly, even trained officers in the police department will have other jobs to do. This will not be exclusive territory for them. And any supervision and training, by the way, will probably cover most of the concerns that you and others have expressed about.
Sure. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Arconti?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to direct a question to you.